There he is.
My daughter's got golf matches, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. This week, so it's a tough start. Tough way to start.
Hi, John. She's already played.
Listen, I don't think it's me. Did I have this?
It's crazy how typically.
Elevator.
Speak to me.
How you doing?
Well, hi, I'm gonna keep this G to kind of look at what we have at May. We're gonna be me, and I'm gonna need to sit down with you two, because I wanna talk about a couple of those.
Sure.
Things, okay, but that that kind of lays out where we're.
Okay. Yes, thank you, we'll do that. In fact, did you say time to come on?
Did it come on unexpectedly?
All right. Keeping in, certainly welcome to the council meeting tonight. Jeff, give us an indication, please.
Pause and pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and represent the citizens of this city. I thank you for the leaders that are in the audience today. Just appreciate all that they do and the other department heads. We're so fortunate. I ask now that as we look at tonight's agenda, we look at the budgets that we have, humble hearts and sharp minds. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, Jeff, appreciate that. But the minutes reflect everyone's here on time at six o'clock for our early meeting, if you will. Let's jump into the approval of the minutes. The August first meeting. Only thing I'd have you note is that their redistricting ordinance twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two oh eight oh one did pass on first reading, and tonight will be the, just a moment, will be the public hearing and second and final reading for that. So, any corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, is there a motion to approve them as presented?
Some moves.
Thank you, Cindy, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Jack, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you, and certainly, who are you laughing at?
I love it. Like, uh, you know, we have enthusiasm tonight.
Lynn wants more pep in your eyes. All right.
Do that when we get.
Thank you, Lynn, that's duly noted.
Yeah.
Appreciate our visitors, our lustrous department heads will be up in front of you making their pitches tonight, so we'll hear from them momentarily. We do have a few reports, the cable Comcast cable franchise fees presented, looks like about thirteen thousand seven hundred three dollars and thirty-three cents for the second quarter.
Yes.
And then Lynn, you've presented the July fund report, any, anything of note there?
Yes, Fund Number Two Four Oh One, which is the ARP Fund.
Oh, there you go.
There's a little expenditure in there from salaries.
Okay.
Just pointing it out.
Have we received our second trialship?
We have not.
Okay.
I would expect it any day now.
Yep, as we've heard from the state, there, it should be coming. All right, any questions? All right. With that, let's move into unfinished business. As I mentioned, tonight, ordinance twenty-two oh eight oh one, which is our redistricting ordinance, will be here shortly, opening for public comment and public hearing on this, our second and final reading. Again, we've spent a lot amount of time and very diligent to do this openly and with a lot of forethought and foresight into our growth in our community, and the map you can see presented, we've had discussions. Again, to this point, I've had no public opinion. We've had no public issue, concerns or complaints or issues. So, and at the last meeting, there was, there was none. So before I open the public hearing, though, I would ask if there are any further comments by the council.
Scott, can you explain the effective date? It says it will become effective immediately upon passage and publication and filing, but doesn't it also have to go down to the state and be approved and come back and all that stuff?
Well, so, we put that in our ordinances, so it gives people notice of when it, when it starts. But all of this is subject to approval by the state election. And we've sent the redistricting. I think the reality is, it becomes after December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. It won't be the districts in November. It'll be starting after December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two would be when the effective dates of that.
So then, starting that date, we would represent the people in our new district planning, beginning January first of twenty-twenty-three?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Who we're representing, okay. I didn't know if it didn't go into effect until after the next election, or if it was in effect once it was all approved.
My understanding is that after the census, the redistricting, and I could be wrong, I wasn't really prepared for that question, but the way I understand, the way I understand from reading the statutes, is it goes into effect, is why you have to have it done by December thirty-first of this year, is because it will go into effect beginning next year, is my understanding.
I'm just bringing it forward, because that was a constituent's question, as to who will, will my councilperson change before the next election, was their question.
But the reality is, is you're all, everybody's councilperson.
Exactly, and we work that way, so.
All seven of you are entire cities' council people, that you represent regardless of your district, you represent people from every district, you're just elected from a certain district, but you represent the entire city of Warsaw, no matter which of the.
And that was my answer to the person, which they're not here tonight, so it must have been fine. But, yeah, I just, I was just curious as to the actual legalities of it.
I just have a question, too. I know last time, we had some issues with maybe colors or whatever in the maps. Is this one updated, or is it still the same as what we had last time?
My understanding is, it was all corrected prior to.
Okay.
There, there was initially some concern that the person who was best capable of drawing and handling the technical aspect of the map had been on vacation, but he returned in time for us to get a clean, updated version of the map prior to it being represented last time.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Jack?
I would like to thank everyone that's had a hand in this. That we started this back in, I believe it was beginning of March, and had a small subcommittee, Mike Londeris and Diane Quantz, myself. We also had the help of the mayor clerk in planning. When we had a workshop, we came up with, with a couple of plans, then we had a workshop with the entire council. I want to thank Scott for his diligence in, in making sure that we keep, keep this moving forward. And also with, with the county, I thank them for timely votes and making sure that it was, it was taken care of according to all the statutes and little idiosyncrasies of how this goes down every ten years. So, my hat's off to everybody, I, I think it went, went rather well. And with that, I guess I would like to move that we accept this on.
Well, we got to have our public hearing first.
Right.
But I'll remember that when we're ready. All right, with that, I'd open the, the hearing for the public, ask if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of the ordinance, petition, the map, the redistricting. All right, seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the map, the ordinance, the petition? All right. Duly noted, there's been no, no comment during the public hearing, so with that, I will close the public hearing and take this back to the council for a final comment, and then a vote on the second and final reading.
Well, if there are no further comments, I will move that we accept this ordinance.
Twenty-two oh eight oh one?
Twenty-two oh eight oh one.
I would second that.
All right, thanks, Jack, I seconded Mike. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? But the minutes reflect that the redistricting ordinance passed unanimously on final reading. Thank you all for all your work on that. Diane, just a quick comment, you know, there's going to be a caucus this Saturday to replace our congressman and Congresswoman, congressperson, whatever it turns out to be. I know during that, there will be two votes, and, and one will be to finish the term, and that will only involve the old district. And then the, the second vote will be to put the, the name on the ballot for the next two years in the new district, because that district as well was redistricted. So I think that answers the question that.
Okay.
Anything that's been done is, we're all still representing our current districts, and very obvious to me that with those two votes and with those stipulations, that those voting have to live in the current district on the first one, and those voting have to live in the new district on the second one. And they're not the same, so. All right. Well, let's get started. Before we, we jump into the budget presentations, you know, I've got a couple of things I wanted to just pass along. It looks like our health insurance, we're going to have another pretty favorable year. We've had good claims experience, and I believe that we, we, we won't have a negative, we won't have a minus, but we will probably have a pretty low increase, probably somewhere under four percent would be my guess. But the board will vote later this month, in medical trust, board will vote on the final renewal rates, and probably next meeting, I'll give you an exact amount, but I think we're going to be in pretty good shape there. Also, just as a general comment, our assessed valuation has come in significantly higher. And to that end, that will have certainly a really positive impact to keep that tax rate down. And again, we'll get a little bit more detailed on that as we get through the budget. As we figure the budget, we, we don't use that new certified value, we're instructed by. State Board of Counts or Department of Labor Government?
DLGF.
DLGF, we're instructed to use, I believe, ninety percent of that. But again, with the renewed, or the certified AV, it, it begins looking pretty decent. So, with that, Nick, you're going to lead us off tonight with the airport budget, and ask you all to turn to that budget.
Is this on?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to apologize now.
Twenty-two oh six.
I've been fighting allergies all day, so if I take a drink, I apologize. Before I do my budget, I would just like to say, at the council meeting, a very big thank you to Kent King. He is my line supervisor. He clocked out at three o'clock today after thirty-four years and six months of service to the Warsaw Airport in the city, and so I would just like to say it publicly, a big thank you. He took me from a, a Greenhorn twenty-six-year-old airport manager and really helped shape me into the manager I am today by training me, the field side of things. I knew the management, I knew the office stuff, but, but the, the customer relations and the, the fuel side and the maintenance side, he's been an invaluable asset to the airport for over thirty years, and we will miss him very, very much. I also did let him know that he only lives five minutes away from the airport, and so if I do need him, I will be calling him in the, in the next couple of weeks if we do come across something, so. Going right into the budget, with personnel and employee benefits, with Kent, we've had a lot of other changes. So next year, our person, our salaries and benefits have changed quite a bit, and that is why there is a slight decrease in that. I'm also projecting, we thought our fuel sales after COVID would come back faster than they have. They are up, we are up about twelve to thirteen percent year over year where we were last year. We are continuing to see that climb, but part of our salary for the line techs is a fuel, fuel incentive. For every gallon of fuel they sell, they get a percentage back, and so that number has come down. But again, that is built directly into the price of our fuel, so if we, if we wind up selling more, then I think I'd budgeted a hundred and eighty thousand gallons for next year, is what I thought we would sell for jet fuel. That number fluctuates with our, with our fuel sales. So, if you don't have any questions on personnel services or any of that. Supplies are going up just a little bit, as you guys have seen, the cost of fuel, paper, all that kind of stuff has gone up, so office supplies went up five hundred dollars year over year. The big one was operating supplies. When I wrote the budget, we had seen a sixty percent increase in our fuel costs, and so I planned for that. I worked, when I had my meeting with the mayor, I said I would rather budget high and then have a line one or a line two cut at the beginning of next year if oil prices drop, but I, I would rather have that money there and not need it than need it and not have it there. So we're seeing about a twenty-four, twenty-four and a half percent increase from sixty-three thousand five hundred to seventy-nine thousand in our supplies budget for next year. Other services and charges, professional services, we are doing a lot of long-term planning at the airport. That's why there's such a significant jump in the professional services. Our engineering group is working with us, and we are doing a, a lot of long-term planning, as well as digesting where we sit as an airport now and where we need to be with pavement, air, airfield markings, lighting and that kind of thing, and so we are hoping to get a lot of that done next year, which is why there's that, that increase for that. I did reduce my travel and communication budget to help offset some of that, and a lot of things are not in person anymore. I'm not traveling as much for conferences and professional education. A lot of that has gone to digital, and so we're just calling in or doing webinars for that. Insurance, I just did a, a standard ten percent increase. I am hoping that that number is going to be less than that, but I haven't got those final quotes yet from our insurance company, so we're still waiting on that. Utility service, just like everything else, is going up. Repairs and maintenance, you'll see a big decrease. We had added sixty thousand dollars, we are in the middle of, we are currently writing a bid spec to replace the roof on one of our T-hangers. It's eight different units, and that roof needed to get replaced. We had budgeted fifty to sixty thousand for that, and so with that project being done, we won't need those funds next year. Debt services, obviously, there's an incre, huge increase there, going from zero to thirty-two thousand. That's the repayment for our tractor that we purchased this past year, and I'll touch on that a little bit more in the capital outlays as well. And then, other services and charges, AWAS maintenance fees, subscriptions, association dues, everything is just going up, and so there's a, just a nominal ten percent increase there. Again, something that I'm hoping we can either line one or line two cut, once we get some of those, those dues in. Capital outlays, all of our, but our budget for pavement projects is staying flat at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We continue to try, we're trying to catch back up with some asphalt that has just gotten behind on the ball, and we're trying to, to catch back up on that. The machinery and equipment, we had originally budgeted that ninety-seven thousand five hundred last year. The reason that is down, I didn't understand, we had never had a debt services line for the airport, and so that's where I thought I needed to put our tractor payment. Lynn corrected me on that, and so that's why we had to swap that, that money around. And because we were able to get such a good deal, we had originally thought the tractor and all of the implements, we got a snow blower, a, a snow bucket and a twenty-foot bat wing. We thought that was going to be about forty-five to forty-seven thousand a year for five years to repay that, and that actually came in at about thirty-two thousand a year. So we were able to save fifteen thousand a year because we found that, that tractor at such a discounted rate, so. Overall, we are looking at close to a one point four percent decrease from last year to this year, just because we did finish some of those projects, and we're just, we don't have any other large projects on the slate. Our big focus is the power line project. And so that would be for twenty-two oh six. Any questions?
I, I do want to make a comment on gasoline. Last week, the Border Works accepted a bid for eighty thousand gallons of fuel for twenty-twenty-three at two dollars and ninety-nine cents a gallon. We're currently paying two fifty-seven, that represents about a sixteen point three percent increase, but we felt that anything below three bucks a gallon was worth locking in.
Yep.
Not, not playing the game anymore. We've got a defined increase in the budget, that I, I feel a lot better than where we're paying right now, so. Well, I shouldn't say that, we're paying two fifty-seven, I meant the current, current amount. So, we, we've done well with our fuel by, by doing bulk purchasing like that. And, and I think this is no exception, but just for your information, we'll have sixteen point three percent increase in gasoline. I can't speak to diesel. I know that they're, actually, they signed a contract for the rest of the year. I don't believe that, that they can go out to the speculate that far out. I'm, I'm not sure that vendor that responded allows that. They were just actually, instead of gambling on the current price, they actually locked in a price for the rest of the year. But for the departments that don't use diesel, that gives you an idea of where those increases are going to be.
And, and can you speak to jet fuel, does, is that included?
No, not at all, no, this is just gasoline. Nick can probably speak to jet fuel.
Yeah, it, the month of May was the craziest, we saw a dollar sixty-seven increase in three weeks, and then it plateaued, we saw it go up another twelve or fifteen cents over that last week of May. And June, it really, I mean, it was up almost, like I said, I think it was sixty-five or sixty-seven percent from what it was in January, and we have dropped close to two fifty a gallon in jet fuel in the last six weeks. So, we really don't know what's going on. All of my futures are saying this week is going to hold, we call it holding fast, it's no price up or down. Last week, we saw a decrease of about seventeen cents a gallon on Jet A and about twenty-three cents a gallon on AvGas. So, the market is the wild west right now, and we just, we really don't know what's coming, but we're, we're doing well. We're, we're selling more fuel than we have the last couple of years, so we're glad to see that uptick and, and.
We're selling that fuel, not using that fuel.
Yep, yeah.
And any updates on the power lines?
We are in the final negotiations for the construction agreement. We have the pre-construction agreement, which has allowed us to do all of the final engineering. When we went out, when we originally received the grant, we were at about sixty percent of the project was designed. They had to do the last forty percent and do some changes in that. They are finishing that right now. We have, as far as I know, the product, if it hasn't been ordered, it's being ordered here in about a month, and then we're hoping to actually have dirt moving next spring. To put this in, to put this in perspective, we've had to work with the Department of Energy and get their permission on when we can actually take the different circuits out of circuit service, because it is a part of the national electric grid, and so all of that has to be pre-planned, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen months ahead of time. Steel, when, as soon as we figured out what was happening, we got that project rolling, because steel is about ten to twelve months out, so once we place the order, it's going to be ten months before it even gets here to start going up. So, there's a lot of site prep that needs to happen, three, right now, we're not at a hundred percent yet, this may change in the next two weeks, but three towers are coming down, five towers are going up, to, to bring it down below that level that we need, so that's where we are in the power line project.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
My other budget is Two Four Seven Six, and you don't have to turn to that, because we don't have a budget for that. We spent all of our money on the power line project last year, and that's just been encumbered into this project, and we aren't, we don't have anything for that budget this year, so.
Any final questions? All right, Nick, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, Hal, cemetery. While he's walking up, that is twenty-two oh five is the operational budget, so you can turn to that.
Are you there? Good. This year is probably my biggest year and going up, which I'll explain. A lot of it indicates in salary. This year, I'm trying to put on another employee for twenty-twenty-three. Talked to the mayor a couple of years ago, it was kind of right when the pandemic was hitting. We didn't know what it was going to bring, and then the mayor was a little worried about this year, so I held off two years before I come forward to you to do this. So, we, the standard four percent is in there, but as you see, my salaries are up seventeen point three, which also took my insurance up about twenty-nine with a new employee, not knowing if it's family, whatnot. So, the biggest part of the, of my increase in this whole budget is that wage. As we go down, also, you've heard it, we're hearing it again, fuel's up, so my twenty-two is up, supply's up. Also, in those twenty-two, twenty-three, some of that reflects part of the centralizing. We took over this year, the police department, of doing all the groundwork outside, all the mowing and cleaning and all that good stuff, so that's another reason I want to put on another employee. Currently, it's taking two guys. Quickest is about a half a day, if not about three quarters of a day to do that project. Just, we do it every Wednesday, and that's just mowing, cleaning, straightening up, weed killing, stuff like that. So, just, you know, we, we don't mind doing it. I asked to take it over before you guys had voted, so I had the whole summer, so I could kind of see what was going on. With that, we gained another mower, so we have another mower to maintain, it's also, it's over there. As you're going down, fleet assurance going up a little bit. Probably the biggest one, thirty, not the biggest one, one of them is thirty-six. Bit Computers asked me to put in thirty-two hundred dollars for a security upgrade back at the shop. Sorry, I'm not a tech guy, I don't know what that means, they just asked me to put that in, so I did. The big one would probably be machinery and equipment for me, we are up forty-two percent. I am trying to upgrade my trackhoe, I have a two thousand seventeen, and I'm looking at one just a size bigger than what we have. So that's, that would be in there, that would put my budget up twenty point five percent. Questions?
All right.
Nope. And my last one, budget is six-six oh five. Is the perm account?
Which one is it?
Six oh five.
Six-six oh five.
Third, third tab.
What do you want to be saying?
Six-six oh five. As you look that, apologize, you'll see in four-four-four account, it looks like it's up one point six-five percent. That's actually just the asphalt, the last, or this year I had thirty thousand, I put in thirty thousand five. It's actually a decrease, as you can see, my cold storage building was put up this year, and that was taken off. So basically, I'm doing some more stonework, which went up, but my total went down thirty-seven point five percent, so I went from a hundred eleven thousand five hundred down to eighty-two thousand. As long as Lynn okay's it.
And this is not a tax-supported form, or a budget, if you will. Can you enlighten us all where those, those funds come from?
This funds comes from somebody along before me, smarter than me, takes half the lot sales. Every lot I sell, half that money goes in this perm account. The whole idea of doing this was to invest and keep this up, so if we get landlocked, it will keep the cemetery as nice as we're trying to keep it now. Currently, Lynn can tell me, I think it's just under a million we, we invest. I don't remember the number, I'm sorry.
Four hundred fifty thousand.
In one, five something in the other. I believe, I believe, we're just under, we, we have it too long. So basically, I think currently last, at my board meeting, I think so far, we put in like twenty-one thousand this year so far, that put out money. So basically, in that perm, what it states is I can use anything for permanent, so asphalt, stonework I'm doing, this cold storage, stuff like that is what I do. So we invest, and look, and I have over the last year, put in some extra walls in this cold storage, so I'm trying to back down to build that account back up again, is what we're doing. So that's how that comes about. Any other questions? You guys are too nice.
All right. Thanks, Hal.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Lynn, you're on deck. Now you're up to bat.
Larry wants to go before me, he can go before me, I'm going to be here, if he wants to leave.
Okay.
If that's okay with you guys.
Yeah. Yeah. You got to stay anyways.
I know.
All righty. Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Well, we'll start with the 2204 budget, our operating budget. Again, salaries enrages, the 4% increase, 17 hourly and 28 seasonal employees. Then we look at the insurance. We put 12% increase in there, like everybody figured. Of course, our per FICA is up a little bit because our salaries are up. Same for unemployment. But we're actually at about a 2% decrease on the employee benefits because we've had some change and our insurances are different. Other personal services, $2,500, that's a 20% increase, which is $500. We've had some phone allowances, and then we didn't know where the encryption allowance was that we had talked about for using the personal phones. Office supplies, we've kept that the same, no increase there. Operating supplies, as we all talked about, fuel cost, diesel fuel and gasoline. So, there's an extra $20,000 in there for that. A 24% increase due to supply costs there, so it's 137,800. Repair and maintenance supplies, we're actually down 38% in this category. We did the $100,000 we had in there for the paving of Pike Lake parking lot, which we also got the skate park paving out of and stuff, so that's out of there this year. So, we're down 72,200 in that category, so 118,000, 38% decrease. Other supplies, this is our meals for snow removal. We haven't used that for the last few years, and hopefully, we won't have to use it again, but it's in there if we do. So, our whole total supplies is 259,300, which is a 13% decrease, or 39,200 from previous year. Other services and charges, professional services, we're up 13% in this, and the major increases are due to, you know, copier cost, cameras at our facilities, and fertilizations. We just had, you know, the state police in our office the other day about some footage that they wanted, and our camera systems came in beautiful and were able to share some of that to us. So, I think the camera systems in our parks are so valuable. We've had so many instances where they came through, and not only vandalism, but the police using them for crimes and everything else. So, I feel really strongly about that. Communications and transportation, this is where we took everything last year and pretty much put in your budget, the council budget. We had 6,000 in there last year. We're looking to add $4,000 this year to that. And the reason being is because we're on the Verizon data plans for our iPads. We're using the Elements program that the city has used. We're able to track our mowing, our buildings, cleaning, our work orders, truck maintenance, fire extinguishers, exit lights. I mean, this is all documented, work orders, and we did it since, I believe, March of this year. Mary got us on board, so the guys are catching on really quick. It's a good system, and I think it'll work in the long run for us. So, the $4,000 increase is for the five iPads, the data for the year on that.
Let me jump in real quick. You're going to hear in the council budget that there's a $30,000 request to build out the Elements software. And this is a perfect example of how that's helping the city. So, Elements has been used for, through, I don't know, three or four departments, and it's being expanded and built out, so that, again, that's just a perfect example of how Elements can be used. Sorry, Larry, didn't mean to jump in.
That's perfect.
Appreciate you mentioning that.
Yeah. Printing and advertising, we're keeping that the same, no increase there. Insurance, we put in 9%. We're told 10%, but I believe 9% of mine was good enough. Utilities, we're up 3% there, 144,000. Repair and maintenance, the big cost in here is we're looking at the Glover Pavilion, metal roof installed, $60,000. That roof's been on since it was constructed, and we had it inspected. There's many shingles missing off that high roof. We have some sheeting that's damaged, so we would like to put a non, or standing seam non-faster metal roof on that, and we had an estimate of about $60,000 to do that work. Normally, if it wasn't, you know, 40 foot in the air, we would look at using our own labor to do that, but I just feel the safety aspect of it, it's just better off to have a contracted up, so. So, that's the big increase there. So, we're at a 22% increase, or $36,000 in that, with that $60,000 roof project in there. So, a total of 160,300. Rentals, we're up 11%. This is due to porta pots for our concerts and our skate park and BMX track, also for rentals for our rec. We're up, we're seeing everything increase there, so we're up 11% on that for 28,500. Other services and charges, 0% increase there. You know, that's landfill, Fourth of July fireworks, employee training, all of our Department of Homeland Security stuff that we have to have every year. Jeff remembers when we first started that, so.
I just worked out.
And then, of course, our musicians and entertainment for our rock, country and blues. So, total other services and charges is 597,800. That's 11% increase, or 63,000, but that includes that $60,000 roof for Glover Pavilion. Then we get to capital outlays. I have 45,000 in here for park land at Richardson Aboy Park. We did just acquire that land, but I would ask that we could keep this in there to develop that land into parking. And that's the land that's east of Fribbly Field. The church, we disclosed with the church on that, they had two lots there, so we'd like to develop that into a better parking lot to be used for, for the field, for the park, for the community, so. Park buildings, here we have our payment on our park office, which is coming, coming along. I don't know if you've been by there. The foundations are showing up, they're in. The perimeter's almost all the way done there. So, we're still expected to get in there the first of March, so we're excited about that, but that would be our annual payment of $200,000 there. The other thing in there is the higher park building restroom. I've talked to Dan there at Dan Rumpel, that runs the BMX, and they would really like to see restroom facilities there. We already have the water there, we have the sewage there. It's just a matter of constructing the restrooms. He's going to go out and look for grant opportunities, and we'd like to have that money in there to help him along with that. I don't know if you're all aware of how much the BMX track brings in to the community. They just had a national, or not a national, a regional event, a state event there the other weekend, and it was just loaded. The whole goal is to get a national event again, and when we have that, I mean, every hotel in town will be full, every park will be full, game rounds will be full. So, I really think that's, if that's something we can get done, it's a good fit. Airport park improvements, we just sat down Wednesday of last week and went over the preliminary drawings of the airport park. We're refining that to see what that looks like. It's coming along well. We'd like to put $100,000 in there just to have somebody in there to start the process of moving the dirt, moving some things around, and possibly starting that, so. Do you have a question on that, Jeff?
No.
Yeah. I don't know if you're all looking at that, but we're looking at cricket fields out there. We're looking at disc golf. We're looking at multi-use fields. We're looking at volleyball courts, playgrounds, bocce ball.
Soccer.
There's open fields, not necessarily a soccer field.
But it could be, okay.
It's green space, used for anything, whether it's ultimate frisbee, whether it's kickball, whether it's rugby, whether it's soccer. So, a lot of things we're looking at on that. And we'll, we hope to have that plan developed by November somewhere in there and have that finished up. Machinery and equipment, replacing a pickup truck as part of our 10-year maintenance plan. Bobcat upgrade that we do every year. One of the things that, that I don't normally have in here was $65,000 for new tables and chairs. As you well know, we were fortunate enough to get a donation from Zimmer Biomet Foundation for 2.5 million for the pavilion renovation. When that's done, we'd like to replace all of our tables and chairs in there. This is a quote, or an estimate, just to replace the round tables and the chairs in there. We currently have rectangular chair, tables and round tables, but that was about $89,000 to replace everything. So, we're looking to go round tables with a few rectangular tables for serving, and it'll be a beautiful place when it's done. We're lucky to have, have that donation, and we look forward to that. So, that's why that's in there. Riding mower replacement, of course, our weed eaters, and then we were asked to put in a wireless bridge by the IT committee. Once our offices and maintenance shop has moved, we need an antenna for that, so. And then, of course, ongoing replacement of skate ramps and equipment. So, we're actually at, on that part, machinery and equipment, we're at a 29% decrease of 57,600 for a total of 139,800. So, total capital outlays of 544,800. This is, our total budget is 10% increase, is 3,222,500. But that attests to the $100,000 at the airport, the land acquisition money that we'd like to do is to develop that land, our office payment of $200,000, 60,000 for the higher park restrooms, and of course, our personal services increase, so. Any questions on any of that?
Just a comment. I'm glad you're going to be working on that parking area next of Fribbly, because I think from a safety standpoint, that's really, really important.
Yeah, that was one of our concerns. We've been trying to get that land for several years now, and they were finally ready to sell, so, yeah, I totally agree, Cindy. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Larry.
All right, the next budget's 2211. This is our non-reverting rec budget. All the fees from our programs go back into this budget, and we're asking for a 13% increase, or $3,000 for supplies. That brings the budget total to 23,350. As of the end of July, there was 43,427 in that fund, so we're taking just a little bit over 50% of that. But I assume that that number has went up since July, because we've had a lot of programs, so I assume it'll be less than half of what's in that, in that reserve, so.
Again, that's certainly not a tax-supported fee. Larry mentioned it comes from those fees from programs. Questions on that budget?
Okay, then we go to the 4403. This is our non-reverting capital fund. This is supported by fees from the 90th Cabin, the Fireman's Building, and our kayak kiosks. As you know, in this year's budget, we added to our kiosks. We put four paddle boards at the Pike Lake. I've got a little stats on that. We've had 122 rentals at Center, 260 rentals at Pike. This is since May 26, so a total of 382 rentals on our kayak kiosks and paddle boards so far. They've been a big hit. So, in this budget, we would like to put $20,000 in there to put paddleboard kiosks at Center Lake. Once we hope the recreational trail goes through there, we'll add to the kiosks that are there. That's something that's been in our five-year master plan for a lot of years, is just having activities on the water, and it's, so far, it's proved to be the right, the right way to go, so we want to put another kiosk there, so.
All right. Any comments or questions on that budget? All right, Larry. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thanks again. Appreciate everyone.
All right. Denny, you're up, HR.
003.
You didn't offer that position to me first.
Oh, it's all good, Lynn. I know you like to have me around a little bit more.
All right.
So, really, the only big difference on my budget from last year is adding an administrative assistant to help do some of the paperwork and busy work. That way, I can get back out and talk with the employees and be out, running around town with them. So, all the changes that we have are on personnel services. It'll be plus 32,000 over last year. And then, supplies and other services, there's no change in any of that. I left it the same as what we had. It looks like we're on pace to, to be right there around those numbers for all those services.
Questions?
Pretty simple.
No, I'm just happy that you're going to be adding an administrative assistant, because we kind of really felt that was needed, so.
Yeah.
Is that a full-time position?
I've got to budget it as a full-time position for right now. We'll see where, where it goes when we get there, Mike. I've got it budgeted as a full-time position. That way, if we have enough work for it to be full-time, it's there and ready for you.
All right. Thank you. Lynn, do you want to go first?
Do you want to go before me? Save the best for last.
Go for it, Lynn.
All right. So, it's tab number four. This is my first tab. And the only category I had any change in was in the personal services due to increase in wages and then health insurance and how it filters down to everything else. So, that was a 3.32% increase. Every other category stayed the same, for an overall increase of 2.34%.
Lynn, just a quick question. Maybe I didn't look, but some of your wages are paid.
We're split three ways between wastewater, fire, territory, operating and general.
Because it doesn't show that in the budget, but understand that. A third, she's paying a third of the wages, and then they're split up. I'm sorry, you said utility, wastewater, and what was the other one?
Fire territory.
Fire territory, okay. All right, thank you.
The next budget would be the general obligation bond, and that's tab 307. And it is what it is. I put an amortization schedule in there like I do every year, so you can see what the payments were for next year. So, that whole budget is 260,300, and that includes a $500 payee fee that we pay every year to Honey Company for the service center.
That's pretty straightforward. Any questions? All righty.
And then lastly, is the tab number 4401, which is your cumulative capital improvement fund. It's not tax-based ever either. It's just from what we get, we get from the state area for our cigarette tax distribution. And $5,000 of that has been budgeted under professional services, with $65,000 for bike walk path improvements or whatever. So, that whole budget is $70,000.
All right. Any questions?
What's the bike walk path?
Those are just funds that have been dedicated to any ride-walk improvements in the city. Typically, they're leveraged when there's a match that comes up, but...
Like sidewalk improvement, is that?
Ride-walk.
So, like the trails around Pike Lake, any bike path improvements that might go through? Or upgrades or?
Signage and anything like that?
Repairs, maintenance.
Sometimes just only use that money if there's some engineering on a proposed path. You know, we put some money into the cycle track downtown to have that engineered. So, it's, again, it's one specific pot of funds. You know, the cigarette tax, we think it makes perfect sense to try and promote health initiatives with those dollars, and that's where those funds have always gone. It's no different than it's been. Fortunately, the cigarette tax revenue's going down, but unfortunately, the cigarette tax revenue's going down. So.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. I'll start in. We'll start with the mayor's budget. This is General Fund 1101, mayor's budget 001. You'll notice half of my salary is through wastewater. The rest is administrative assistant and my assistant paid full. There's also an increase in there. The Wage Committee has recommended kind of truing up salaries for elected officials over the next couple of years. We're not going to get too much into the details of that tonight. We'll deal with that when the salary ordinance is considered later this year. But we wanted to make those allowances and have those funds in the budget to be able to allow that to happen. So basically, that was a study that looked at external wages and it's trying to get our wages somewhere at the midpoint. I think the committee has determined that salaries of elected officials do need to be adjusted. And as I suggested, that'll be a discussion for when the salary ordinance is actually entertained for next year. So that portion of the budget is up 7%. Supplies have stayed the same. Communication and transportation is actually up a couple thousand. That budget is up a couple thousand dollars. Capital outlays is up a bit as well. Mayor's office looks like it's going to need a new copier next year. So that's really where that's at. Total budget increase of 10,000, excuse me, 10% increase of about $25,000 in that budget. Questions? All right, we'll move on to the council budget. Worked with the council on this budget. I know Jack signed it and we spent some time looking at this. Again, similar increase, looking at the standard increase, excuse me, I said '03, it's '05. Standard increase of the, it's a little bit more than that. Again, we're looking at an increase in council salaries over the next couple of years. Again, we've wanted to allocate those funds into the budget now so that that discussion can be supported if that does pass. But again, that will happen when we look at the salary ordinance. I'll remind you that half the council salaries also come from wastewater. So at this point, there's 11% increase there. As I mentioned, we budgeted 12% for health insurance. It looks like we're going to end up with about a, somewhere, I would say, below 4%. So we'll probably, next meeting, have a firm number there. Supplies are up just a small amount. Professional services and charges, I would ask you to go to the budget explanation sheet that looks at non-for-profit requests as well as council contract. I just put a flat amount in the non-for-profit council requests. Remember, you all capped what we can use at 1.5% of the previous, of the current year's general fund budget. That's $225,406. Council contracts are pretty much unchanged. Little bump in legal and professional services. What you will notice is that the IT contracts, $120,000 for our IT contract, that was in 320 last year. So it's just been shifted over to contracts where it needs to be. And then there's also a $30,000 allowance in there for the contract with elements, on that elements build-out that I had talked about previously. So with that big contract, that bumps our contracts and that total amount of professional services up to 37%.
And I would just note maybe on that too, I was just trying to go through the nonprofit and some of those also came through on the contracts that I think where's the housing that asked for $40,000 and AWL 36. So, and just kind of maybe updating on the nonprofit council contract request, I think Jeff and Jerry and I will have that probably for the September meeting once we do a little bit, a little bit more work on that. Our request came in $40-some thousand more than what we have budgeted or are able to budget for that. So we got to do some trimming. I did have one question too about the parking lots. I saw where that one parking lot is for sale. I don't know whether that's one of the ones that we rent or not.
It is for sale and if we don't need the money, we don't, the contract will be broken if it's sold.
Yeah, I didn't know whether that was...
So that could be out of there as well. Yeah. Don't forget, and when I get to the ARPA budget, there are funds available for COVID relief for non-for-profits in that budget as well. And we talked last year about using some of that even this year. And there is an amount in there for next year as well, so...
I think we are going to probably need to have a discussion about that.
Okay. So you'll see that professional services jumped quite a bit, again, primarily from that IT contract. A little bit of increase in tech, our phones and fiber is up a bit. Our centralized licensing, this centralized licensing, this is the, this was the bucket that the IT contract was in. The IT contract is up a bit this year. There's a real focus on cybersecurity. It's becoming increasingly more difficult to just buy your way out with cyber insurance. Most insurance companies, it's extremely expensive and they are requiring that your IT department have many procedures in place to try and eliminate and fight that off. And that's primarily what we're doing this year with those funds. We're looking at cloud backup, multi-factor authentication. So those are the types of things that we're investing in this year. And that's why that budget is up a bit. Let's see. There's also about $40,000 in server licenses that are only due once every five years, and we're on the fifth year. So we're paying those licenses for all those servers now. Okay. Gas, electric, we bumped a bit, 7%. We do have 390.901. We've got a municipal election next year. I've got a letter from the county clerk that suggested that $32,000 would be the amount, an estimate for the cost of that election. And we bear the cost of that election since it's a municipal. Okay. Our capital outlays look to be up just a little bit. Another precaution, if there would be a cyber or ransomware attack, if we have a backup server, a separate backup server, we could be back in business pretty quick. Problem is to order one of those takes, Josh, you're shaking your head, 12 to 18 months to get a server. So...
I'm not sure on that. Probably. That's what it is with everything.
It's going to take a while. So the idea was to have a backup server. And that could function in a mechanical failure, ransomware attack for our GIS server, for our city PD server, or any server within the city. So I think that's a $63,000 cost makes, to me, a ton of sense. So with that, with the municipal election, the server, some of the IT increases, that budget is up 15% from last year. Jack, I know you went through this. Didn't know if you had any questions or comments on this budget?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I think having a backup server is smart. That's, yeah, smart.
All right, let's move on to Edit.
Can't afford not to.
2209. So this budget, like last year, salaries and wages, it's a new part of this budget, or second year of that. Community and Economic Development Director and his staff are funded, looks like a quarter for this budget. Administrative staff's budget are funded a third from this budget. Again, we've got a 12% medical insurance increase that we're budgeting for. We know that'll be less. Going down into other services and charges, let's see, a little bit of increase in some dues, professional dues, not much. And then going into capital outlays, we're actually down 14%. There's a first payment on the Owens' property. Then, let's see, we've got a pavilion remodel donation match in there. And we're basing that on what the estimated cost of that project was, but the bid came in quite a bit lower than that. So more than likely, we're not going to need that full amount. But the Lincoln sidewalk construction match, we've had to rebid that a second time and potentially a third time. And that, that may go up. So we're just keeping an eye on that.
I do have a question. On the Owens' property now, is that, do we own the Owens' property?
It was acquired by KEDCO, by their land trust. But it is our, we will be buying that property. It depends on the timing on the development.
Okay, okay. So pre-development.
Yes. All right, questions? All right, let's go to 2235. That's a riverboat fund. These are funds from the State Riverboat Fund that are revenue that we receive. This year, we put $300,000 into the demolition fund, potentially for the GAKI building, depending on how that project progresses. So it's up just a little bit from last year. Questions? All right, let's go to 2401. This would be our ARPA fund. So I know we've had a chance to talk about this. We've spent some money this year and what's in the budget is pretty much, let's see, we're on track to potentially spend 1.1 in '22 and 1.8 of that in '23, but obviously, we're waiting for our second tranche. We'll as well fund these requests. So we're looking at, let's just go down through here. There's a payroll amount, but it's not really specified at this point for anything in particular. We had just set money aside initially for that. There is $55,000 for the CARES Coordinator. Let's see, and that we had set aside, $200,000 total. So that should, we funded $35,000 this year, $80,000 next year. And again, we've got to put the per FICA life and disability in that as well. So we probably won't use all of that, but then we'll have another $85,000 in 2024. So that position should be funded for three years. Then we've had some discussion on neighborhood infrastructure improvements. Again, we've got an amount there. We've talked to street department about those types of sidewalk and curbing improvements that will be, again, they're in the budget for next year. I don't anticipate, let's see what we put in here for this year. Got about $50,000 in for this year for neighborhood infrastructure. Okay, moving on to professional services. Again, this is where the COVID relief, non-for-profits and small businesses, looks like we've got about $112,500 set aside for this year with additional $25,000 in 2024. Launchpad Initiative that we've gotten involved with Launchpad on affordable childcare, that's been split up into $62,500 for the next four years. COVID vaccines and testing, if that becomes necessary, those funds have been set aside for that. And there was some request to do some off-site, if you will, parks programming. Haven't had much discussion about that, but we've left that in there as well.
Mayor, back up to the neighborhood infrastructure. Is it 50 or 250? I'm looking at the right. I thought you said 250. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's 250.
250.
Yeah. It was $50,000 for 2022 and 250 for 2023.
Thank you.
Also on the small business then and the not-for-profit, is that $112,500 for 20...
2023.
And is there some for this year or do we carry over to 2024?
There was nothing. Let me look in the budget. I don't think there was anything.
I don't think we had anything this year.
I don't think there was. Let me look real quick just to make sure.
Yeah, I think we chose not, I think we chose not to put anything in it because we wanted to let the other agencies who were getting their ARPA money distribute that so that we did not duplicate efforts so that we could see...
Pick up after the...
What the needs actually were once all the other funds were distributed. So I think that's why we kept it out of this year, Cindy.
So then will we have some for 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
$25,000.
$25,000.
For 2024.
Okay.
Yeah, there was nothing in 2022.
Hopefully that we're over the COVID amount by then. Just doing some cleanup.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
So then, moving on into the 360s, repairs and maintenance. Got to install our new streetlights, that emergency repair. We've set aside $100,000 for that. I'm not sure we're going to need that much to do that. Neighborhood infrastructure maintenance, $100,000. And then public spaces, air quality at City Hall, I've got about $350,000 in there for that. And none of those have been, they're allocated, but no projects have come before the council yet on those. They're just placeholders that were originally put in. Let's see, 440. And we've got $625,000 for water infrastructure projects. Most likely, those will be either sanitary sewer or drainage projects, storm sewer projects. And again, that's just an amount that, none of that's come, none of these, most of these haven't come before the council specifically and will. But those, again, amounts that have been set aside. And we went through this last year. These were the amounts that we at least have been put in. So there's some flexibility here if different needs arise, but trying to stick in the spirit of what those ARPA funds were originally designed for. I think this is a pretty good, pretty good budget. And again, these funds are all from the ARPA federal tranche. Questions?
Mayor, I think I just take a moment and mention to the council that I'm sitting on the Fire Territory Board as the council representative. And as you all know, we've hired a new CARES Coordinator and she is getting glowing reviews. The work she's doing, I guess, is stellar. And I just wanted you to know that so you feel comfortable with that money in there. She's picking up a lot of slack. Police aren't having to go to scenes where she can go in and take care of it and police can do what they do best. Might be the best way to put it. But that's money well spent, in my opinion.
Yep, thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. You probably all noticed, there's a lot of communities that are establishing these programs. And I think we've done a good job getting ahead of that, doing it through the fire department, taking our time with it. But as Mike said, we've got a great, great coordinator who's doing a marvelous job. So continue to follow that. All right, next would be the Edit Revolving Loan Fund, which would be 2502. You might remember, this was set up... You might remember, this was set up when an extremity came for some inducements to go out into the tech park, and we bought a piece of equipment with a TIF bond, if I remember correctly, and then the rest of this was an incentive. If they met certain employment goals, we'd give them X amount, $50,000 per year for the next five years. That's why this was set up. There's $250,000 in there for that. Well, when Extremity was purchased by Midartis, they decided that they were going to return the first $50,000 that we had given them, and they've also decided that they don't need this incentive. So we've got this fund set up. Certainly, there could be another company come in that, if we feel meets those employment requirements and investment requirements, this is a tool that we have. But certainly, that incentive paid off, and not only did it pay off, but it kind of paid us back. So just FYI. So there's just the $250,000 has been left in there for that reason.
And that comes from the Edit Fund? It's not a different fund or anything?
It was required to be set up when we set that incentive package up with Midartis, well, with Extremity, excuse me. And then my last budget is CCB. And this budget, again, is funded at a, by a rate set aside by the state. And what we've done this year is we've bumped a little bit in repairs and maintenance, our sidewalk 50/50 program.
What number is that, Mayor?
I'm sorry, it's.
4401.
4402.
Sorry, I got confused.
Thank you. Other services and charges, we primarily have been using these funds for stormwater projects, $50,000 in for stormwater engineering, repairs and maintenance, another 50. We've also increased the street sidewalk and curb repairs after those improvements are done, when the street department comes in and has to repair the roads. So other services and charges have been bumped up a bit. And then we've improved or increased our stormwater capital improvements project budget from $300,000 to $500,000 in there. So we bumped the budget from $505,000 to $825,000. I think it's important to spend that money where it needs to be spent and where it's earmarked. And with inflation, the way things are going up, doesn't make any sense to have it sitting in the bank. If there's projects, and we have plenty of stormwater projects in this community, we need to use that money and spend that money.
And we did get the rate reestablished to a full nickel for next year as well.
And even with that spending, there shows a fund balance of just under $1 million in that fund at the end of next year, if everything is spent this year as it was allocated, and same thing in '23. I work with stormwater and with Dustin on this budget to try and see where they need those funds the most, and that's really reflected in these changes. All right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know we lost our stormwater utility.
Coordinator.
Any plans to replace him? Has he been replaced? Are we looking? Are we?
I think they're in the process. Yeah, so we will be replacing him.
They're doing it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, that's a critical role.
Yes.
To maintain our permit, that's got to happen.
Our MS4 designation.
Right. So. All right, any other questions? Looks like, Danny, you're the only one here from the department, so I suppose the rest took off. So Danny, can you answer any of those questions?
Yeah.
All right. All right, very good. While there are no other matters to come before the council, it looks like we've got some guests here that would like to talk, so we do have time for visitors' questions and comments. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, state your name, and just list your discussions.
Thank you for talking with me. I'm Catherine Topley, and I am friends with Nathan Reader, and he recently came to my husband and I and just had talked to us about if I could even working for, you know, back for the last two years following the progression of the plans for what we have in Parker Street and US 30. And he asked what we do about it, and we didn't. And so he put together a petition. It's over 1:30 today, and I started passing out the petition in our neighborhood just Saturday evening. The reaction has been pretty much consistent of just shock. And it's because, I think the feeling of, yes, we know we're growing as a community, we've watched the traffic that has gone along, like if you look at, and I'm terrible at direction, saying like, okay, go north on this, but basically, what would be the new pathway if there was, if US 30 was cut off from the Menards complex, there would be no way to change potentially the Google routing that trucks would see or people would see that are now coming to that complex. They might very easily be routed through five-plus neighborhood access roads. And when I just, in our neighborhoods alone, I talked about returning to people, everyone was feeling like, yes, we know we're progressing, but there's no way that we anticipated that our access roads would turn into on-ramp and off-ramp for US 30. And when there was no other potential access, and we're already dealing with significantly increased traffic, there's some times where people cannot get out of their, onto their main streets for 10 minutes because of traffic. That's not unusual at certain times. And we know two new neighborhoods are going in. And again, that's all understandable. We're growing as a community, but to be the only on-ramp and off-ramp access for five neighborhoods that are already feeling the stress of our growth felt very upsetting. So a lot of people felt like it couldn't be possible, and then they looked into or talked to people and realized, this is actually the plan that has been drafted up and is being submitted for review. And I think the shock is, is that this can't, this, they're feeling like, well, they knew there was plenty of solutions, and then that moved, but this solution doesn't feel like a, to the people I've talked to, this doesn't feel like a plan that you could prevent. This is so outside the realm of what our neighborhoods could anticipate or manage, that it felt like this can't be a viable plan. It was a feeling of like, and so we looked back through the article, and there's comments in one article that was like, there were cheers and overwhelming approval of 200 people, and not one person in our neighborhood read about this, not one. The petition's already over 1:30, and it just started on Saturday. So I guess there's a feeling of wanting to express how dangerous we perceive this on-ramp off-ramp situation. We talked to somebody who works at ProGress, and they mentioned the number of semis that go each day, Menards semis. In addition, that the, just the people going to Menards, it would be everybody Cleveland, I'm talking towards, you know, coming from Fort Wayne direction, there's a large community of workers and people who would be closer to Warsaw, Menards, and Fort Wayne. And so all of those individuals would be potentially routing through our neighborhood, loading up for their construction work or whatever they're doing, getting supplies, and then going back that way. It's just, the amount of traffic seems inconceivable to our residents and to our, the people that live on these streets because we're already feeling the burden. And so we're just respectfully, we're concerned because it sounds like there's been many approval processes, and we know that, and all five neighborhoods that I've encountered has known that, they recall interactions about the overpass, and that being exciting, everyone feels like part of these better access. It makes no sense that somebody in an emergency situation would try to remind back there. We're all, we think all those things are fantastic. But the concern is that they would be putting a lot of neighborhoods in danger, and also it doesn't seem logical that this could be an actual plan that's been written up in his box basement. It was kind of shocking that this could be the plan that we're moving forward with as a community, and also feeling so uneducated. People had conversations about a few people who had been keeping up, and I think many of us would admit we don't keep up as we should. We've got highlights of the overpass and those advantages, but not, not that all of US 30 traffic would route through these neighborhoods, and that is deeply concerning to many, many people. And so I guess the request is, could we, could we request a time where we could be on the agenda? And also, what would be the steps that we could have more dialogue? And is there a way to even discuss a different plan if it's submitted? Because this feels outside the realm of what could be a reasonable consideration. So that, I'm just trying to express what a collective would be, like 250 people I've talked with, and there's other people here, but it definitely was portrayed like it was just really, like there was cheers, and one article was cheers, and enjoying 200 people. So one of our questions is for those 200 people. If that's mainly businesses and not residents, then we would like respectfully to have, like we have the resident component added to that as well. And then, I wonder if anybody else could come up and share.
I'd like to make just a few comments. First of all, there's been no plan decided, there's not been, I was given that sheet, and it said something about we're in the final phase of design. The city is not designing. This project will be engineered and designed by INDOT. So what the city did was, at those meetings, and those were all public meetings, we had three large, very well-attended public meetings, and I would say the first meeting was packed full of folks that didn't want a southern bypass. I would say the other, the later meeting was packed with people that didn't want a northern bypass. And what we did with the drawings were just to see if keeping a freeway along the current corridor was possible. There was no design of frontage roads, there was no design of really those intersections. In fact, the Parker Street interchange actually showed a, either an overpass or an interchange. They're both in there. So no one has made any kind of decision on that. We've had probably, I'd say, 20 stakeholder meetings with folks along the road that have vested interest, but all those meetings were open to the public. They weren't, they were primarily residential folks that came to our public meetings, and I think at the one meeting, we had over 800 people. The last meeting, we probably had 200 or 300, but we had three public meetings over the last few years. But let me help you understand, I talked to the INDOT commissioner today, that the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study is the first phase of US 30. And they will come in, and they're going to look at going north, they're going to look at going south, they're going to look at everything, and they're going to look at doing nothing. And this study will take probably two years. So the idea here is that all we're going to talk to INDOT about is that we've had two or three years of meetings with stakeholders and the public, the large public meetings we've had. It appears that staying on the current route is what the preference is in our community, period. No detail, nothing.
With our route of making a overpass and no access, you know.
No, I didn't say that. I said staying on the corridor, not going north or south. That's all that we've decided as a community that I feel is representative. None of those details in that plan, that was a design concept, and at that meeting, it was portrayed as such. And we were very specific to tell folks that these details are nothing more than a draft design to see if that road, if that, those improvements could stay along the freeway, along the existing corridor. So what happens in a project like this is that, this project is being proposed from the Ohio State lineup to State Road 49, and every county and community going through, we're having these exact same discussions. Your concerns are very well-founded, because we don't know what's going to happen. When INDOT comes in to do the PEL, a big part of that study is public listening, of understanding what people want, what they don't want. And neighborhoods, businesses, emergency services, schools, fire departments, ambulance services, every stakeholder in the community will have something to say. And we want to encourage the concerns and problems and issues that you have to be shared with the engineer and INDOT when these public listening sessions start. They will be run and moderated by INDOT and the engineering firm. You know, we're building up.
Like in Warsaw.
Oh, yeah, they'll be county-wide, and I talked to the chief of staff from INDOT this morning. We thought this was going to start in the spring, and that's been the disappointing thing to me, is that we're not already in this process. But my understanding was they had some problems getting their final contracts with the, it's a very large project, they've got multiple engineering firms, they're actually doing some work on US 31 as well as US 30. So, you know, they're finally at a point where these contracts are signed, the PEL has started, we will be meeting with the engineers and INDOT and just explaining just exactly what I told you, that it appears that staying on route on the current corridor makes the most sense. How we do that, that's why they're here. If they make a suggestion, or they decide that indeed we need to, whatever their final decision is, the next phase is to do a federal engineer, a federal environmental study, because that's required to get funded and to get a designation number. Again, not really much engineering is going on up to that point. After that happens, then there's, then there's some preliminary engineering that will look at these different interchanges. But what they're going to use is, they want to know what the community wants and what they don't want. And they want to know, during this PEL process, this is the time that they are taking public comment. This is the time that they want folks to be there and say, this is what we not, this is what we don't want. Now, the other part of this is understand that where they put these safety improvements, be it closing the road, be it a great separated overpass, or be it an actual interchange, you know, those are things that will be decided as they go along. And I just want you to understand, there's no final plan. The city didn't do any engineering, the city merely tried to determine, do, when they come and ask us what we want as a community, do we want to tell them we're going to go south and do a big old bypass like they did in Kokomo? Do you want to go north and do maybe a smaller bypass? Or do we want to stay on route like they did in Carmel and Westfield? And I think that's the decision that the community came up with. But for the most part, there's been zero design work done to this point. Now, as I mentioned, those other improvements are obviously going to drive what happens over the next 15 years. But more important are the frontage roads that are created and designed as a part of that. INDOT knows that they're going to be cutting off some folks' access to the road, and part of the whole plan is to create frontage roads that connect folks back to those interchanges. So it's a very complex design process. And obviously, in this community, we've got nine stoplights out there, and, you know, there's going to have to be a lot of work. But please understand that there's been no, zero design work done to this point, but this process is starting where this public comment is, this is critical. Because I think once they go through the public comment phase of this project, then they're on to the next, they're on to the engineering and the pre-construction design, and then the construction design, and then right-of-way acquisition and finding the funding, and they're moving. So a lot of folks think, well, this isn't going to happen for 10 or 15 years, but the train has left the station. There are five projects in Allen County right now that have designation numbers, dates of construction, they're starting. So we have really a good chance to spend the next two years doing exactly what you all are doing and coming in saying, hey, we don't want this, this is what we want, this is what we don't want. And the entire community will have that opportunity, as I mentioned, from those folks in the rural areas that wanted to stay on route to where our emergency services want those overpasses. So I just, I wanted to make sure you understood that there. So, I, I just, I wanted to make sure you understood that, that there's, nothing's been designed, nothing's in the final phase. It, it's a, it's a long, it's a marathon, it's a long process. And, um, it, it's, it's a tough process. Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Um, and I guess I didn't mention, if anybody wants to see the petition, I'm happy to give them the map to, um, to what kind of is, is our concern. Um, but, I guess I'm here. But, um, and the whole petition is just basically access to 30-
Sure.
Or an off-ramp, you know, that doesn't cause a light, it's not that much of a danger. But some kind of solution that would not require all of the traffic from US 30 coming through those access roads to get to those businesses, all the supply trucks and also all the people who get into there. And on the other side, which I assume Parkview is restricted access, I imagine that's a part of what's happened, is Parkview would like better access, which we would all agree is necessary, especially when they're a full hospital. But even if, if Google or even our signs routed them that way, there's concern that that's all of the US traffic going there, US 30 traffic going there, um, next to an elementary, where we already cut it out. So, both solutions feel like they would be solved by just having off-ramps, um, just leaving some kind of access facility. Just wanted to add that little component. But we appreciate so much the time. And, um, it sounds like it will be absolutely, it will be meetings where we will be able to give all of our input and it will be with indot at those, they will be turning. So we will be looking for that. And I did want to just reiterate, we do know that we have been asleep at the wheel. Like, we know this has been going on for a long time. And if Nathan had not brought it to my attention and I had not brought it to all of our neighbors' attention, we wouldn't even have known now. So, we do acknowledge that we have been not, we have not been going to meetings as well.
I, I don't think you've been asleep at the wheel. You know, these, these things are evolving. And, um, again, there's no plan at this point. We might say that we want this to happen going on the existing corridor. Indot may come in and say, you know, it makes more sense to do this, this, and this. You know, I, I just, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that. And the only thing I did want to mention is, is if they stay on route, they are not going to come in and put an interchange at each crossing. There will not be nine interchanges replacing nine lights. So, it, that, there's a cost factor there.
And I guess the feeling is, well, could we, could the one that's at Center Street, that gets probably a teeny fraction, can't hang around through the cars?
Well, again, I, I don't even want to get into the details. But you're right, there's one at Center Street, a partial-
If we have to give Parkview, if we have to close another one, it just feels like that the second most used interchange is like, you know, and then the cost can be great anyway.
Thank you.
I give one on. But let me just hand this to you if you're interested.
Sure. Thanks Cassidy, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Do you have contact information on there so that we can reach out to you?
Yeah, let me also give that to you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That way we can reach out to you at third meeting.
Send somebody a P V S if they need it.
There will be plenty of, um, indot, in fact, that was one of my questions with indot this morning, is folks are going to want to know, these meetings are going on and these meetings are started. And, and they're, the engineering firms that are running these meetings, it's their responsibility to get that information out to the public. And I was assured we would also receive the information to get out on our network. So, um, you know, we, we publicized the heck out of our previous meetings and had great attendance, and I, I don't foresee that being any different. So, yes ma'am?
Could you speak up, please? I'm Chris, I'm the, um, I work at Q and A, so it's an encouragement to know that indot is a good company for us. And so they're not going to be, uh, from our statewide and state-wide and county-wide. So that, that's a comfort to me. Um, I'm a mom with a young child. So the only suggestions that I have, if, we have to do what we have to do, and that's how the routing comes up. Um, I, like, this is a side block scenario, we don't have them. Um, I have some eleven, I have some eleven stretch right to school, and I live on the other side of the park, so we have to go on that for, um, if it's down, I have a property to, you know, there's going to be a graduate site and a drive across. But, um, it's the odds of, if there are side blocks, we give them a trust that we can trust.
I would tell you, when Menards came in, um, I know Jeff sat on the planning commission then, we were insistent many years ago that when that property developed behind Menards, that we would have right-of-way to create an access so that they could get on the road behind Menards, get to the school without having to come down through the front. Um, the only problem is, is that residential has not developed yet. But, there is some interest in that, and, and that could happen. But when it doesn't, and we actually, when we talked to folks that were considering the development, we made them very aware of that right-of-way, that's required into their property. So, I just talked to somebody about that today.
So that's all right. Um, and then light, only other stuff for lights and, uh, that's a special issue, we get stuck, uh, we have a cell phone.
Which intersection?
That's the Menards stop sign.
Oh, right.
But, um, you, you mentioned that you would be getting my contacts from indot.
Yes.
Do you have a paper or did that-
Well, we will do that as well as, that's indot's responsibility and the engineers, that they are, this is their project. We will be getting the information, and you can bet it'll be on our website, and we'll get it out on our Facebook page and, um, all the media, they, they will certainly know. Again, I share your frustration that this hasn't started. It, it should have started this spring, and it didn't. But it's, like I say, it's about an 18 to 24-month process, so there's going to be, I think, plenty of opportunity to weigh in.
So, I do it up in the hallway, um, I do that area, so I'm planning to have to change that area to hold the platform, um, from, I mean, one, I'll do it over to, um, Coldwater, because when they got the, that hospital and, and some string around about, it was a two-lane highway at 55, and they created four lanes, it's 45. So I, I've seen the progression, and I was thinking that we could, you know, do something like that here, but indot and then general, and then, uh, we're, we'll have any of their accessions.
Yeah. We were very careful when that drawing was done, to label it as a design concept. Uh, we, we made many references at those meetings that, that this is how it could look. But certainly not that this was even an engineered design based on traffic flow. It was just to see what right-of-way was available and could we actually put, we didn't know if we could put on-and-off ramps, you know, there's, there's not room for clover leaves down there. But there are some really tight diamond, uh, on-and-off ramps, interchanges, that actually fit within the current right-of-way. So, um, you know, that's all, really what we were trying to find out. But, yeah. Thank you very much.
So what does the acronym-
Ma'am, could you, Anne, could you come up to the desk, please?
I have two questions.
I know, but we're on, we're on, you're on TV, Anne. Well, our streaming service.
What is the acronym P E L?
Planning and Environmental Linkages Study.
Planning and environmental-
Linkages.
Linkages, okay. What is the, um, length, or how do I get information about the upcoming meetings, from indot or from the city?
As I mentioned, once indot, and I talked to them this morning, once indot has that information, they're going to release it. And that they'll release it.
I don't know that though.
They're going to release it to the public. It'll, it'll-
It's pretty-
I would imagine it'll be all of the above. It'll come down, I assume, on the wire service, they will market it, the engineers will market it. We will market it once we get the information.
So we're going to Warsaw, um-
Warsaw.in.gov is our city website, but the Facebook-
In.gov, I don't have Facebook.
Okay. Anne, you can call me, I'll, I'll tell you.
We have, we have a website, to tell my people, uh, where they can keep track of the upcoming meetings when they are determined. It would be on the website too, Joe.
There's no doubt in my mind that it will be banner headline.
Is that right, right?
There's not going to be people that won't know about it.
And then what is the website that you're talking about?
Warsaw.in.gov.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne, I appreciate it.
Hi, Joe.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good.
Um, so, I remember when I did a big deal with Meyer, that going in where Menards is now. And there was always a, for a long time, there was a back and forth, and the editor of the paper, which I don't know who it was, I don't know, it's not me. But he was always, you know, not in my backyard, you know, all but sniffies, and, and, and and, 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 and.
You know, I lived out there at that time.
I know you did, I know you did. And your mother and your sister and your mother-in-law live there, still. So, um, I wonder, does that still apply? I mean, how much sage, I mean, do, do they really take that into consideration?
You know, that is, that's a fantastic question. What you have to understand is that you're dealing with a project that could cost, maybe by the time it's built, over a half a billion dollars just in this county.
Right.
And, indot has some of these, I would say, unwritten rules, that they're not going to put an interchange any less than a mile from another one. Okay? They're going through this in Fort Wayne right now, at, at Kramer Road, which is right at about a mile from Flow. So, you know, those are the financial decisions that indot will be looking at as they try and piece this whole thing together. You know, the safety, um, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, we had, um, we had stakeholder meetings where we had, um, folks that had businesses all along there. And the businesses felt like that it would be safe for people crossing 30 to have an overpass, and it not just there, you know, kind of anywhere along there, an overpass would give the community some safety getting across to their businesses. Now, that's just one, one side of the story, you know? That might be true. But as you all have pointed out, um, if they can't access US 30 there, they're going to have to go somewhere else. And therein lies the, the concern. But along with that cost, along with those intersection improvements, there's frontage roads that try and alleviate those concerns and those problems. And, and the city, we knew, and the county, we, we used, our elected officials and our planners sat down and said, we're not going to try and engineer this thing. You know, there, there's no way, uh, just, just putting a few, um, improvements on a map is, is nothing more than something that says it, it can fit on here, but from a frontage road standpoint, it's a lot of work. And, and that's the, that's the design and the engineering that is beyond our capabilities, pocketbook. Uh, this is a federal road project. And that, that creates a lot of complexities in, in decision-making. So, but to think that, that you all just are not going to be heard, I don't believe that's true. And if you, if you show up and have those concerns, and, you know, what you're saying can apply to other neighborhoods. You know, understanding that we don't want our Patterson Road, for example, to be a frontage road. We want a frontage road. We don't want our residential streets being turned into frontage roads. And, and those are more than legitimate complaints. Those, those are very important, and those are the things that you need to get across.
Well, it's just, I mean, I know your mother's, Anna, who's what, 90?
91.
Mom's eight, will be 87. And her fly zone is now just Menards and Markes. That's as far as I let her go. But, you know, I mean, and I know, I realize now that the timeframe is longer than I, than I thought it was going to be. So probably in 15 years, she may not be here, so, I knew she might, knowing her, she probably would be.
But you said five, she said five years in the article that was three days ago, you said five years, not 15.
Just for engineering.
Okay.
Five years would be, so about two years on the P E L, probably another, at least year and a half on the federal engineering side of it. And then they got to find the money and, and put it on the state transportation improvement plan. Uh, and then, then they start doing pre-engineering, which takes a couple of years. And, you know, they got to find the money, and then they've got to do the engineering, which takes several years. And, and that's like fast-tracking. So these projects over in, in Fort Wayne, um, they're not looking to go into construction other than the, the Kramer Road, the interchange in Amazon will start construction in 2024. And, and that was designed for them, that was probably part of an economic development incentive to bring them in. But, um, the other, they're not, they're looking at probably 28 before they get started. Now that's six years from now. And those are fast-tracked. You know, we are not going to have that same, we've got to go through all the engineering process. So, I will say, since I've been mayor, I'm extremely concerned about safety out on US 30. And it's not getting any better. And my mom doesn't cross 30 either. She's, now there's, she's got places to go without crossing 30. But the point is, safety has been the number one concern from day one, and continues to be. And I'd like it to happen quick so that we don't continue to have these horrible wrecks and problems.
Well, I love that you did, um, from coming from the west, the two-lane turn onto Parker, excellent, by the way. Thank you. That eased up so much congestion and really made a big, huge difference. And I, I mean, I second everything that Cassidy said, we, it's, it's, it's safety, it's more than anything, and it's the traffic that is on that road. We have so much traffic now that we have. And, I mean, when, when Ted and I moved into that house 22 years ago, the best thing that we loved about Timber Ridge was it was a older subdivision. You're in city limits, but you're not in town. You have all the amenities, but you still have that little bit of a country feel to it. And I just, I would hate to lose that. And I know, somebody has to go somewhere, I get that. But it just seems like that's our part of town, right in that hub, is just really growing really fast. With the only other exception, which is Le Coles, and that will stretch it. But there's no houses out there.
Right.
So I just feel like we're really bearing the brunt of, if someone's going through it, so that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily Murphy. I was here a, a couple of months ago, and I live in Timber Ridge, so I'm here for that reason too. But I'm also here to talk about the Buffalo Street Townhomes. And I know that it sounds like that Matthews is no longer going to be doing where the water treatment plant is, is that what I read?
Yes.
Okay. And then now I'm wondering, like, I think the paper said you hope he can concentrate on selling those townhomes. And, I mean, I don't know if there's something going on that maybe isn't publicized yet, if he's going to keep those or not, because he's not really doing anything to sell them. And, I don't know if something is going to change, or are they going to continue building in that other lot? So I'm just here to keep it out in the open, just to get those, I mean-
He's building, he's built on his own property, he's invested his own money. The city hasn't given him any money.
I mean, I'm just thinking that it sure would be nice to have those sold, and people are coming by all the time, and they say, when, you know, is there an open house, can we see it? And she's like, no.
Right.
They don't have open houses, they aren't showing them, and they are, so that, that was my question.
Yeah.
Seems like there's interest, but nobody's trying to sell it.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming, and, and I, I can guarantee you that the moment we hear from indot about the first public meeting, you will all, we may even-
Get that airplane that's got the-
Mr. Grody.
Yeah, there you go, that's really- Tack it on the back, yeah.
I don't think you're going to need it, I, I think many folks are going to know about it. But I, I certainly understand these, these conversations go on in every community up and down US 30. And they're important conversations, and you being here tonight says a lot. And quite frankly, um, we're agreeing with you. I think we're all sitting up here shaking our heads, we don't want to do something that's going to make our neighborhoods, we're going to improve the safety on 30, but we're going to make our, our neighborhoods a racetrack. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, all right. Thank you all, appreciate it. All right, anyone else?
Anybody else want to, right? Yeah, thank you. And then I have more of these if you need them. And I will change that statement on the top. I think you'll find everything accurate, but it said in the final planning, so I will fix that.
Thank you.
I think.
All right. Anyone else?
Self-help.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So move? All right. All right, thank you all.